Well, we got straight up six o'clock.
So. I call the Belvidere City Council Committee the whole meeting for July 27th, 2020 to order. The clerk will call to roll.
Arivolo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe? Ratcliffe? Is absent. Snow?
Not Ratcliffe.
Okay. Ratcliffe is present. Snow? He was on the phone. Alderman Snow?
I'm sorry, I had it on mute here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present.
Okay, we're all heard here, that's wonderful.
Present. Ratcliffe's present.
All right then. Under public comment this evening, Jeff Carlisle from the county board is here to comment again on stormwater.
Thank you for the opportunity again. My district has been hammering on me on this, on the stormwater and the attacks that's going to be there. Some people call it a fee, some people call it a tax, semantics. What we have here is, I got a history lesson from many of these people, and I do recall some of this because I, I lived this area in that period of time. Back in the 60s where this area that we're talking about was, was quite the swampland. And it actually was a recharge area for our aquifers, and we built on it. And it doesn't do us any good when the aquifer's still trying to work and recharge, recharge system is still trying to work. It's not a good situation.
I gotta tell you, Alderman Snow here, I can't hear a word he said, it just sounds like blah, blah, blah.
Can you, can you hear me now, Dan?
A little better, but.
Come up by the microphone.
We'll need to speak up a little bit.
No, use that microphone, but come up, see, and let's hope we don't get feedback.
Can you hear me now, Dan?
Is that better?
Yes, I can hear that.
Okay, let me start over again. I, um, in my district, I've been getting a lot of calls from people saying, we don't want another tax on the stormwater. We also don't want to have another, uh, situation that we have, don't know where the money is going to. So, I'm from the area, I know these areas, I've played in the areas, and a lot of, like, a lot of people my age know the area very well. It, it was a swampland, and it always has been a kind of a swampland. And it, the problem with that is, it's a recharge area for our aquifer, and it's always going to be a recharge area. Regardless if there's homes on it or not, and it's gonna be like that. So, the idea of putting a tax on this, trying to remediate that is gonna be very difficult, because you're always gonna have that problem. I think there's another way of working through this and around this. I also think that the city has a responsibility to pony up some cash and funds on top of this, not just the backs of the citizens in this community. Because it's everybody's problem, everybody's situation. So, what I want to make sure that everybody knows that, the fair, the report that came out here is a tax form. Simple, that's all it is, they want to add money to get a stormwater tax on the backs of people, that it was a situation that was always been there, always will be there. Thank you.
Okay. Um, if it's all right with everybody, we have some awards to give out tonight to police department, and what we had up next was a land bank update. But if it's okay with everybody, we'll move ahead and do the police awards, and then we'll do the land bank update. Everybody, everybody all right with that? Okay, good enough. Chief, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could have the officers and deputy chiefs step into the council chambers, please. Thank you. Um, the, uh, first certificates and awards we're going to present, gonna be presenting to Officer Schwartz, Officer Julie Schutz, who couldn't be here tonight, and Officer Jonathan Kaplan. Could I have you three, well, both of you step up? That's good, thank you. Um, Monday, May 25th, 2020, at approximately 4:35 PM. Uh, can everybody here, okay?
Yes.
Everybody on the teleconference here, okay? Okay, I'm gonna go with yes.
Are any Aldermen on the phone? Hello?
Alderman, are you on the call?
Glad I asked. Where, where'd Joy go?
To, to the restroom, he's having some.
Issues?
Issues right at the moment.
If it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna wait until we get them back on the phone.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, we thought you were in the restroom.
Why isn't that ringing?
Welcome, and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com. You're helping people around the world to make cake for free. Present your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. Your entered 1-0-6-5-8-8-2. If this is correct, press 1. To round your access code, there are six participants in the conference. Please announce yourself.
We're back. Are all the Aldermen on the call?
Okay, so I, I never, this, this Alderman Snow, we not doing a jet starting a regular conversation, but.
Well, he's gone. And the chief is ready to start with his awards. We decided to do the police awards first, and then we'll do the land bank.
So, uh, just to recap, I have Officer Schwartz and Officer Kaplan standing up here. And I'm going to be reading, uh, uh, some excerpts for life-saving awards for both of them. On Monday, May 25th, 2020, at approximately 4:35 PM, Belvidere city officers were dispatched to the 800 block of North Appleton Road for a report of a female that was holding onto a tree after the kayak she was in overturned while kayaking on the Kishawaki River. Female was located clinging to a tree branch in the Kishawaki River west of the VFW. The Kishawaki River's water current was fast-moving due to high water level. Officers Schwartz, Schutz, and Kaplan assisted in the successful recovery of the female holding onto the tree by assisting other Belvidere police, uh, police officers in securing the Belvidere Police Department rescue rope on shore that was secured to Officer Brandon Parker's waist while he swam through the fast-moving current of the Kishawaki River to retrieve the female holding onto the tree. Officers, you assisted in pulling Officer Parker and the female to shore with the rescue rope. Your actions resulted in a successful team effort of, of saving a human life. In recognition of your actions, you are presented with Belvidere Police Department Life Saving Service Award. Congratulations. If I could have Officer Rich Wyland step up, please. Officer Wyland, you assisted in the successful recovery of the female holding onto the tree by securing the Belvidere Police Department's rescue rope onto Officer Brandon Parker's waist with the proper knot to reduce the risk of Officer parking from floating downriver while attempting to swim to rescue the female through the fast-moving current of the river. You also assisted in pulling Officer Parker and the female to shore. Your actions resulted in successful team effort of saving, saving a human life. In recognition of your actions, you are presented with the Belvidere Police Department Life Saving Service Award. Uh, as a footnote, I also wanted just to point out that he was an Eagle Scout, which helped contribute to this particular rescue. So, congratulations. Sergeant Michael Ball. Uh, Sergeant Ball, you assisted in the successful recovery of the female holding onto the tree by coordinating and directing the rescue efforts and assisting other Belvidere officers in pulling Officer Parker and the female to shore with the rescue rope. Your leadership and actions led to the successful team effort of saving a human life. In recognition of your actions, you are presented with the Belvidere Police Department Life Saving Service Award. Congratulations. Last, but definitely not least. Officer Brandon Parker. You went above and beyond the call of duty and retrieved a life vest from a bystander, placed the vest on, utilized the Belvidere Police Department water rescue rope, tied it around your waist, swam through the fast-moving current to rescue the female, retrieved her from the tree branch, held onto her while other Belvidere city officers and other assisting officers pulled you and the female to shore. Your actions were an act of bravery and heroism. You acted in a selfless manner with courage and devotion to duty, risking your own life and personal safety to save the female from being swept away by the strong current, saving her from the possibility of injury and/or death. In recognition of your actions, you're presented with the Belvidere Police Department Valor Service Award. Congratulations. Officer Parker, if you wouldn't mind just saying a few words on behalf of everybody?
Thank you very much for inviting us here, Mayor, Councilman, Chief. Uh, the two people that, uh, really helped out that day, that's the team standing to the left of me. Without that individual tying that knot, you know, I thought, where'd this guy know how to tie a knot? And thank God I did, because I would've been going down the Kish. So, everybody else pulling in, that is a team effort. Without you guys, when you guys stop and think about it, I had full clothes on, she had full clothes on. The current was extremely strong that day, the water was cold. These individuals along with the Boone County Sheriff's Department, the Illinois State Police, the Belvidere City Fire Department, it took that many people to pull us in with the current. Without them, like I said, I thank God I had them as a team, and I'm very, very proud to stand next to them anytime, at any call. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank all of you. All right then. Alderman Frank had requested that we have an update on the land bank, so Eric Seder, who runs that operation for Regional Plan Commission, is here to do an update. Eric, the floor is yours.
I've got some handouts. Up here, something seems to work best. All right, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me. My name is Eric Seder with the Region One Planning Council and the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority. Uh, with really, Belvidere's, um, pushing, the, the land bank was created January 2019, and, and the mayor and this council was, was, um, integral in getting the land bank set up. And what a land bank does, if you recall, we, I think I was here probably before January 2019 to discuss what kind of, in theory, the land bank will do. Uh, so, happy to be here with a brief but very exciting update. So, 20, January 2019, the land bank was created. We now have eight members, which are listed on that second slide, funded by the Illinois Housing Development Authority, uh, just shy of $500,000, in two rounds of grant funds. And what do we do with those grant funds, and why is the land bank necessary? Uh, kind of is, is, uh, after these officers told their stories of heroism, kind of puts it into perspective. We're trying to put vacant abandoned properties back into productive use and raise YAV. So, we are a tool that can be used to raise property values on properties that currently are not paying taxes to, um, to the city, to any of the taxing bodies. So, the way we do that mainly is a judicial deed and using the abandonment statute, uh, but also the land bank can accept donations. Uh, if we had, you know, funds we could go out and purchase, we have no intention of doing that. But the main mechanism for acquisition is a judicial deed. So, if you look at the first side of the Belvidere property, uh, the first property acquired on the behalf of the land bank was acquired just a couple weeks ago. Uh, it's a little bit of an atypical situation, but typically, when the land bank acquires a property, we go to court and tell a judge that this property is two or more years tax delinquent, it's vacant, and in some sign of disrepair. Uh, health and public safety hazard. Uh, what a lot of judges in Illinois are deciding that just being two years tax delinquent and not having an owner show up and say, yes, this is my property, that's really a public safety hazard and a, um, a, a detriment to a neighborhood and, and a city. So, um, we're trying to navigate the courts to figure out what that threshold is. So, we're kind of in a, um, a little bit of a period of, of, you know, finding our feet, finding what works, um, in, in Seventeenth Circuit. But also moving ahead as quickly as possible, we don't want to delay, delay too much. So, the first property was acquired, um, and then after it was acquired, IDA had reached out to the city of Belvidere and us and said that there's some grant funds that can be used for exterior repairs, would, and this would be a candidate for these grant funds. This property, 1,000 Nettie is the address, sorry, for those of you that are on the phone. So, 1,000 Nettie, we are able to use IDA grant funds for exterior, exterior repairs, mainly roof and windows, but that will be decided, um, by city of Belvidere, uh, grant staff and public work staff, and determine what's needed, and, and those grant funds will pay for that. Typically, as soon as a, a land bank acquires a property, it would be beeded to the land bank from the city of Belvidere. We would sell the property, any proceeds would go back and reinvest in, in, uh, land bank acquisition. What's important about land bank and why it's important for, um, other communities, not so much Belvidere, but, uh, the land bank board gets to determine who is the, the approved buyer of a property. So, we're not necessarily looking at highest sales price. We're looking at, is somebody gonna be an owner occupant? And the land bank board representative for Belvidere, uh, Mr. John Wolf, would be the one spearheading that, that debate for, uh, Belvidere. But looking at, you know, who is somebody a problem property owner in the past? Is it a, uh, owner occupant, like I said, renter? If it is, do they have a history? Do they have the capability of, of rehabbing some of the houses? Some of them, as you'll see on the, the back page of this, some of them are in some, um, some, uh, more, more disrepair than others. So, do we have the capability of doing it? Are we sure that this owner can do it? And then we're gonna tie deed restrictions to that sale to say, you know, this property is in bad condition, we need you to get the exterior fixed up in maybe 30 or 90 days, and we need the full interior done within six months or a year, depending on the condition of the property. So, we're using that tool, we're, we've got two other properties in queue, uh, 1031 Garfield, Garfield and 407 Allen, that are in different stages of a court process. They're not guaranteed to be acquired, the owners can still go in and claim them not abandoned. But, um, really what the land bank's trying to do is take these properties that have been sitting vacant and delinquent, get them into new revived ownership as quickly as possible. Um, there is, you know, a tax sale, tax buyers, county trustee systems that do that, but typically that takes three, four, five, even up to nine years to get, to get that property out of a current property owner's hands. So, what we're doing is if the property owner is, uh, agreeing that it's abandoned, not showing up to court, we can get it within six months to nine months and get it out as quickly as possible back into that owner's hands with, um, the promise to, to get that property refurbished quickly. So, um, one of the properties I just drove by on my way in, the, the property immediately next door is for sale. So, that's what this whole program is set to do, is, you know, increase that prop, uh, you know, having a vacant property next door is gonna decrease that home's sale value. It really has a ripple effect. So, if we can get these few properties that aren't quite to the point of demolition, but definitely need some repair and definitely need some intervention, that if nothing happened, there's no market for these properties right now, because the owners have, um, you know, either left town or, or just given up on it. So, there needs to be some sort of intervention to prevent them from going to the state of ownership, uh, the next phase of ownership. So, uh, that's kind of what's happening now, I'm happy to answer questions. But some of the, the activities we're looking for, uh, to do in the future is just continue to monitor these tax delinquent parcels, work with Gina and her staff to identify properties that are vacant. That's kind of the biggest thing we need to do, we need to prove the property's vacant. We're not trying to displace anybody, we're not trying to become a landlord ourselves. If a property's occupied, we will not touch it in any way, shape, or form. Uh, but once we turn these properties, we use IDA funds to acquire these properties through court, we sell them. Those proceeds can then be used for commercial buildings. IDA funds are only residential, but commercial buildings can be done, uh, well, many land banks throughout the country use this really only for commercial buildings. That will be kind of our phase two. But, um, then we'll look at commercial buildings, ones that again, vacant, abandoned, and are sitting to deteriorate, no owner in sight. So, uh, the other thing we can do is, and work with IDA, like we're kind of partnering with your, your grants team, uh, is find additional demolition and rehab funding. IDA has, uh, put a lot of money in the land bank concept, and they're, they're excited that we're up and running. So, they want to make sure that we are, uh, an asset and a complement to your guys' staff, not a, um, you know, we're, they're not taking dollars from the city and, and giving them to the land bank. They want them, uh, our funds to kind of be on top of, uh, any city grant funds and be additional, and, and kind of double down and, and hit more properties. The other thing we can do is, uh, you know, by monitoring those tax delinquent parcels, is start to identify clusters that we see that are popping up as either tax delinquent or, you know, a few houses in a row that are vacant, working with, uh, city staff to, to figure out what are the best ways to move forward with that. A lot of times, acquisition may not be the, the end result for a land bank property. We're finding out, especially in South Beloit. Um, we're going to court, bringing a, uh, a case that says this property's been vacant. It certainly is a pu, uh, public safety hazard, it's, it's, um, uh, vacant, tax delinquent, all of those, it hits the things. And then when it goes up to court and owner shows up, and the city of Belvidere has, or city of South Beloit had been trying to get those owners into administrative kind of code hearing processes for years and years and years, and never heard a response. So, by that owner showing up, the land bank is not going to become the owner of the property. We would substitute out and let the city of, you know, Belvidere, or in that case, South Beloit, take over and talk to the property owner and figure out a solution in front of a judge. And that's really a win for, for us as a land bank, not a financial win. Uh, you know, our goal is to acquire them, sell them, reinvest and do that over and over again. But it's a win for the neighborhood and a win for the city to be able to, uh, get those properties using our grant funds, um, and then get that, that property owner into compliance much quicker than they would if, if nothing happened. So, that's kind of an overview, I hope I, I hit a lot of the, the marks, but happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions? Alderman Frank?
Alderman Frank.
Uh, Alderman Frank has a question first, and then Alderman Freeman.
Um, I don't actually have a question, but I wanted to thank you, because I live in Ward Three, which is where Nettie is, and I've had a problem with that since the get-go, and I, I haven't been able to help with that. I, I work with Kara and whatever, and it's been a problem, so I'm glad it's being addressed.
Yes, we should have something done with it very soon.
Alderman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, first, I would like to talk about whatever that handout is, and, and let's just pack it if that's possible. And, um, the question is, so, the land bank buys the properties through the court, and then, um, they use grant money to start the rehab, or they just sell the properties as is? And do they, um, control who can buy the property? Uh, with contingencies in the contract, and then it has to be done at a certain date? How, how does that work?
Yeah, so, I'm gonna kind of forget the one property that's a one-off with kind of the remaining IDA grant funds. But typically, we, uh, we don't necessarily buy a property, we, our expenses are legal expenses, and that's what the state has grant funds for us to do. So, we use state grant funds, uh, for legal expenses to take a property to court. We acquire that deed and we sell it, uh, almost immediately as is. Um, but we do use those, um, contingencies on the buyer to make sure that they're not going to sit on it for another two years, that if they, you know, get a property tax bill in a year and, and don't pay it then, that we're not just, uh, accelerating that cycle over again. We want to make sure that it's back into a, a productive use. So, um, typically, we're not gonna do any rehab on that property. We get a property and we sell it as is, um, with the hope that, uh, the sales price is higher than, um, our acquisition price, which is, uh, generally $5,000, give or take, but, um, that can vary. So, so our, our, our goal is to sell the property for, for more than that, so then we can do it over and over again.
Alderman Freeman, this is, uh, Attorney.
So, the, um, you know, it, people can, you just put it for sale, and up to a mortgage, and people just go through a conventional loan from a bank?
We don't have, uh, they could go for a loan, it could be a cash, uh, all that would be considered, uh, in, in that sale. So, we would probably expect many bids, some to be cash, some to have a loan. Um, again, that's determined by that land bank board to, to decide who the, the end user is. I believe, uh, Attorney Drella has a comment.
Uh, very quickly, Alderman Freeman, and it may have been covered earlier, I stepped out of the room for a moment. There's actually a fourth property that the land bank chose not to take, which is on Madison Street. And one of the reasons I presume they didn't take it is, it was in such a state of disrepair, it could not easily be flipped. Um, we realized that it was however eligible for the statute, so we went forward on our own and approved of the judge that had been vacant for two or more years, was tax delinquent, had damaged structures. Uh, and we will tear down that building and that house, and, and then it'll be up to the council as to how they want to handle that lot. One of the true benefits to the judicial process is most of these properties have made tax sales in their history. Many of them have very old mortgages, they may have been foreclosure at some point, as the Madison Street property was. And the mortgage company realized that the property wasn't worth anything, so they just dismissed their mortgage case, but the mortgage is still sitting out there, effectively making the property non-marketable, nobody can buy it, because of these old liens. The judicial process extinguishes all those liens and gives us pretty clear title, so we can transfer it more easily and put it back on the tax rolls.
Becky has something to say, too. Ms. Dovin?
And just to clarify, we're, when you are hearing about grants, we're actually talking about two different grants. There's your land bank grants, um, and then we have our own abandoned property program grants. And that's what's being used to demo the house that Attorney Drella was just talking about, and is being used for the exterior renovations that are needed on Nettie, and possibly some of these others. We have until the end of November to use the remaining grant funds for this program. to use the remaining grant funds for this program.
Alderman Freeman, any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Yes, Alderman Stevens.
What's the address on Madison of this house? I'm curious.
Alderman Snow has a question.
You have the floor.
I'd be interested in how do you enforce the prospect of that your intention is that the person will update the exterior in three months and then the interior six months to a year? How is the enforcement of that implemented if they fail to even make a reasonable attempt?
Yeah, we can do that through, typically through a deed restriction. So, record it on the deed that says you have a certain amount of time, or that deed will revert back to the land bank. You know, that's kind of more of a, you know, just a nudge to make sure that they do that. I don't, you know, if somebody's going to buy the house and put in that effort and we make that agreement, we certainly hope we don't go down that path. But a deed restriction would be recorded on the property with an agreement that says if you don't meet these guidelines and we don't hear from you, or, you know, we don't have some sort of extension, you know, given by the city, the land bank, and the owner, then that deed could revert back to the land bank, and then we can list it for sale again.
If it did revert back, would that entail them getting their money back, or would they just lose their money, or you'd have to give them some kind of refund towards their purchase at that point?
That would be spelled out in the agreement. Typically, they would lose their, the purchase price, which is why they're incentivized not to do that. But that would all be laid out kind of more on a case-by-case basis. We've got, we're following best practices very closely on communities that have established land bank and figuring out what language works best while, you know, making everybody comfortable and not putting a buyer in a, you know, unreasonable situation.
And when it comes to the deed restriction, after they rehab the house, can they come back to you to say, okay, let's remove the deed restriction?
Absolutely. As soon as it's occupied or signed off by a building permit by the city, then they're good to go. There would be something in there that says if you, when you get to this point, that's gone, and then it's there, you know, free and clear.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hearing no one. Mr. Satter, thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Next up, under Public Safety, New Business, under Item A, we have the Walmart donation. Chief?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind turning to the memo contained in your packets. It'll be a motion to accept Walmart donation. Please be advised that the Belvidere Police Department has received a donation in the amount of $1,000 from Sam's Club Walmart. Walmart has donated this money to the Belvidere Police Department to purchase two televisions and associated equipment for the Belvidere Police Department workout facility. Motion to approve the expenditure of $1,000, $1,000 of donated money from the Walmart Corporation for the purchase of two flat-screen televisions and associated equipment, and to accept the donation.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, that, Porter.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor approval. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We already covered Item B, the awards for bravery and life-saving police department. Under Item C, Belvidere Fire Department, number one upstairs, a remodel of the flooring in Station Number One.
Okay, you have the update in your packet. There's a motion to accept the quote of $3,300 from J&amp;J Hardwood Flooring. This expense is going to come out of building repair and maintenance line item 01-5-220-6010. This is just to put the final stages on our floor upstairs in our station one.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes?
[inaudible]
Alderman Frank has a question, and then Alderman Freeman, please.
I'd like to know if we sent out any bids to anybody locally in Belvidere, since we always try to support our local people?
Yeah, there were six, there were total of six bids sent out, and we only received three back, and these are the three that responded to that, so.
Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. Can I ask, how close are you to completing this remodel at Station One? And how much more funding do you think that it's going to take?
Once we get the floors complete, it's coming down to just some trim and some fine tuning with electrical work. So, as far as expense-wise, that's minimal. It's just the labor and getting the floor done, and then getting everything moved back into the facilities.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor approval. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brerton?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to Item D, Belvidere Fire Department, the EMA air truck. Yep?
Okay, hopefully everyone had time to read the letter from our EMA coordinator. We really got a motion to pay $12,000 for the combined purchase of the EMA air truck. $10,164.91 of this will come from the General Mills Public Safety Grant, with the remaining $1,835.09 from the repairs and maintenance vehicle line item number 01-5-220-6030.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second?
I'll second that, Porter.
Second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Frank.
I would just like you to explain what an air truck is.
So, what this is, EMA, the Emergency Management Agency, Boone County relies on them, on us, as well as any of the other three fire districts out there. If we have a structure fire, a hazardous materials call, water rescue call, their volunteers bring this vehicle out, and they're able to fill our air bottles. So, when we use their air bottles to get those back in service, when we do finish up our call, we're able to get back and going. The vehicle that they're using now is currently over 30 years old. It's had a lot of maintenance issues, so they're looking at getting a newer updated vehicle. And EMA Coordinator Zachard came across a vehicle that'll hold probably almost twice as much air, and it also has a light tower, so we'll be able to utilize it on scene, other than, not only for air, but for other uses as well.
There's no questions or comments?
[inaudible]
Alderman Stevens, and then Alderman Freeman.
When I left the department 10 years ago, this thing I thought was on its last leg then, and that was 10 years ago. So, from what I understand, they got to look in the rearview mirror to see if parts are falling off it. What this will do is it'll hold much larger high-pressure cylinders to fill up the air packs that the gentlemen use, and they are definitely needed at each and every call that they go for fire or anywhere. We're going to need the air packs.
Okay, Alderman Freeman?
So, my, so much a question, I was in FYI. When I first read this, I wondered, the Belvidere Fire Department, the proper fire district, Red, County Fire District Two, and Tacon Fire District Number Three, as well as the Sheriff's Department, ran this with a cost of $12,000 each. And the wonderment was, did the Emergency Management Agency have a budget that they could also contribute? And the question was answered, and we checked to somebody that their budget is actually connected to the Sheriff's Department, so that's where their share is coming from.
Okay. Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor approval. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to Item E, Belvidere Fire Department. It's just an FYI concerning the abandoned property identification program, the REDX program. Yep?
Yep. I'm actually going to turn this over. Our inspection coordinator, Travis Tangi, is here tonight, so I'm going to have him come up to the podium and discuss this further for you.
a firefighter safety program that we'd like to implement in Belvidere. The program's been utilized in the city of Chicago, as well as the city of Rockford. And most information that I have is actually shared from the city of Rockford. I've worked with Division Chief Matt Knott on this program. Basically, the program, it's for firefighter safety. If we have known hazards in a building, we're going to placard the building, and all the placards are based on codes we've already adopted in the city of Belvidere. So, there would be no new ordinances. All of it is already existing. This already has approval from the mayor, as well as the city attorney, the fire chief, and the building department. So, the criteria for it, if there's any known interior or structural hazards to a building, if it's delinquent, abandoned, and we kind of talked about that earlier, if it's been condemned by the building department, and the last step would be to place these signs on the building. So, the process would go, if there's an owner, obviously, we're going to try to work with that owner, and the last step would be to put these signs on it. But if there's no owner, taxes are delinquent, then we'll go through that process of bringing this to the fire chief, the building department, the city attorney, the mayor, and also share our findings with dispatch and the sheriff's office on it. So, basically, if there's any questions on the program, I'd be happy to answer that.
Anybody have any questions concerning the REDX program? Yes, Alderman Frank.
Is there a cost?
Alderman Frank is speaking currently. Alderman Gray, you're next.
Is there a cost for this program?
So, no cost to the program. I brought the sign with us. This is $17 for the sign. So, it would be roughly one to two signs on a residential property, and for a commercial property, maybe two to three, but anywhere from, starting at $17 is all the sign cost.
Yes.
Will they be placed inside the building, so they won't be stolen, those placards?
No. So, the sign would go up where you wouldn't be able to just get it, so usually above a front entry door. So, the way the code reads is we can put them at any entrance to the building. So, ideally, one at the main entry door. If there was a secondary entrance to the building, we may put one there. But for the most part, most buildings, one to two signs would be sufficient.
And they get screwed in. Any other questions or comments about the REDX program? Okay, this was just an FYI. It doesn't require a vote. Excuse me. Oh, okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, Rick. Sorry.
My question of the cost, I was answered. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, under Finance and Personnel, unfinished business this evening, there is none. Under Finance and Personnel, new business is promised. There is a budget and finance update from Finance Director Becky Tobin. Ms. Tobin, you have the floor.
Okay. In your packet, I just copied you, and you should have two different spreadsheets. One just gives you the revenue updates for July. So, a lot of your taxes, your sales tax, your home rule sales tax, the July revenues that we received are actually for April. So, this is really our first full month that we're seeing what kind of sales tax impact we have received from COVID. You'll notice our sales tax was down about 14%. Our home rule sales tax, down about 21%, which I expected the home rule to be higher. You will also notice, though, our local use tax is up 29%. This is your online sales, which, of course, have skyrocketed since everybody's purchasing everything online. Income tax has stayed relatively the same, little bit higher, because although we have a lot of people in unemployment, they are still paying income tax. So, that has stayed level for now, anyway. Your local motor fuel is starting to go up, which is good, because technically, your July payment was actually your June local motor fuel tax sales. MFT, relatively the same as last month, still pretty low, same as the transportation tax. Your court fines have gone up slightly since court is back in session now, and obviously, your video gaming is still a zero, because this is actually for May. So, really, it'll be two months, it'll be September before we start to see any revenues for video gaming. Also, on this other spreadsheet that I gave you, we did start to receive that gas utility tax, that increase that was approved back in April, for the revision to the ordinance, so that everybody was paying the gas utility tax. So, that was $44,174 for June. I do not have July's numbers yet, but I just wanted you to be aware that we have started to receive that revenue as well.
Questions or comments for Financial Director Tobin?
I have a question from Becky.
Okay. You have the floor, Alderman Freeman?
So, Becky, I had a question about, actually, it was about last week's bills payable. But it was about the million dollars, you know. I had multiple questions on YouTube that they didn't give me some answers to, like, what was the initial investment? How long ago was it invested? Was it a 12 months, three years, short-term, long-term? What interest rate did we get? What was our actual webinar that we gained off of it? And if it was a million dollar initial investment, and it matured, and what it's gotten, whatever the interest rate was. And when I looked at the income statement, some general fund, and I didn't see anything big on those revenues. So, I'm looking at that money, and then as far as the way over to the Bay Area Bank, I'm questioning how long of a term that's locked up for, and what the interest rate is on that?
That's all information I can get you. I have my spreadsheet that I do every month. I can send that to you tomorrow. I can copy it for next month. It just breaks out the CDs, especially with the way the market is right now. I'm constantly moving money all the time. Sometimes they're in CDs. Our CD rates are not that great right now. Byrons is actually much better than anybody else, which is why I moved it there. The money markets are holding steady right now, better than a lot of the CDs, actually. So, you'll notice we have a lot of money in our money markets, as well as our sweeps. So, I'm constantly moving. So I'm constantly moving money on almost a daily basis so that we can get the best interest rates possible. The spreadsheet that I have just lists the CDs, and it lists all the information that you're asking for, so I can get that for you. It has all the rates, it has how long, it has how much interest we'll receive, and all that information.
Okay, that would be great, because I'd like to see what we made off of that initial investment, and what money we got. Yeah, I have a different government portal, is there another question, too?
Alderman Porter? Question, please proceed. Go ahead.
So Becky, yeah, this is more or less finance related. I just had a question. As far as the spending limits for certain things, like say, a grant application, fee that we have to pay to apply for a grant, or any other expenditure that the city might make, is there a limit, certain like lower limit where it has to be brought before the city council for approval? It seems like it's a little hit or miss as far as what's brought before us, and what they just go ahead and kind of do as far as like grant applications and that type of thing. I'm just wondering if there's like a minimum limit?
We do not have a formal purchasing policy in place. There's been past practice, there's been memos that were written by prior administration, but there is no formal purchasing policy in place, per se. I can have the city attorney address that if you'd like.
For certain department heads, there are, I believe it was one set for the police chief. As a general rule of thumb, if it's $2,500 or under, the councils previously allowed the mayor to kind of make that call. If it's more than $2,500, it comes to city council. The exception of that being certain routine purchases that we make on a monthly or quarterly basis, that's in the budget. For example, when Brent needs to purchase fuel for the fuel pumps, a lot of times they'll just go out and buy that fuel because it's necessity to keep, not only our vehicles running, but also the entire counties. And that appears in bills payable. The reality is not a dollar is really spent because you do approve all the expenditures through bills payable.
And just to also, when you approve the bills, those checks do not go out until you approve them. They stay in our office. So if anybody was to have a question, or need to pull out a bill for more clarification, we can do that. So none of those checks go out to be paid until you have, we have the council's approval.
Alderman Freeman?
Go ahead.
So Attorney Drowell, did you just say that pretty much anything over $2,500 comes to the council? Is that what I heard?
With the exception of certain routine purchases, for example, the fuel, certain office supplies, yes, that's correct.
Okay, because there's a whole lot in the study that are over $2,500 that, I don't recall, given on our agenda to approve. So maybe we'll take a look at that, and make sure that anything over $2,500 is actually given on our agenda to be approved, please?
This is kind of far afield of this evening's conversation. As far as I know, it is or should be, with the exception of routine purchase, like I said, it's previously budgeted, and it's something we buy on a regular basis. Another example might be ammunition for the police department, fuel. Fire department sure has a few routine expenditures that would exceed that $2,500 mark. But I would point out that, as the discussion that I've had with the finance director, at some point in the future, the council may want to consider a policy that has a higher limit, frankly, than $2,500. Most cities, it's either $10,000 or $20,000 for a top ceiling on expenditures. We haven't done that at this point, I come to you with that, given the current fiscal situation. But quite frankly, sometimes it's just hard to operate a department the size of the public works department, or the fire department, or the police department, with that kind of spending limit for its department heads.
Like, if there is $6,500 to apply for a grant for a private facility, if the grant doesn't go through, then we're out $6,500. And things like that, I assume it does pay, but after the fact, after it's been done. And things like that, we're owed $6,000 for $1,000. And I would have questions, I'd say, what is the interest rate? What, how long is the term? Because if it's going to break us through interest for three years, we're not going to run it. Three years from now, if it goes through, it's running today. So let's just see what hasn't led to come before the council says discussion, before they're just going to hang done.
Well, two things. The $6,500 you're talking about was reimbursed to the city by the people who are applying for the grant through the city for fair gram. They paid the bill. The citizens of Belvidere did not pay the bill. Secondly, Becky, we'll talk to you about a million dollars. Go ahead.
As far as the investments go, like I said earlier, I'm constantly moving money. And the city's investment policy gives me the authority to move that money and to open those CDs. Like I said, I'd be more than happy to present that spreadsheet to you on a monthly basis that shows the breakdown of where the money is. You will notice, too, on your, every month on your one-page treasurers report, it does break down how much money's in checking, how much is in the money market, and how much is in CDs. They're not individual, but you do see that as well. But, I mean, I'd be happy to report all that, but it would be really, really inconvenient if I had to come back to council every single time. I mean, there's days where I don't find out the interest rate till the day before I have to move money. So it would be really inconvenient to have to do that.
Alderman Arivolo?
Becky, is it fair to say, since it's an investment, we're not really spending the money, we're investing it? So we're not purchasing anything besides trying to gain money back from interest? So why do we need to come to you for an investment that we're going to get money back?
Well, most of all, I don't have a problem, you know, presenting you with that report every month. That's, like I said, it's city money, you should see exactly where it goes. I don't have a problem with that. The hard part would be just to come back to council every single time I needed to move money, because it happens rather quickly.
Yes, Solomon Stevens?
Problem is, a good rate on Wednesday won't be there Monday when we meet.
Anybody else got a question or a comment?
I guess, Alderman Snob, I'm assuming when some of this stuff is being moved around, Corey Thornton, as the treasurer, has to sign off on it. So I'm assuming, as an elected official, he's somewhat keeping an eye on things.
Yes, Alderman.
Absolutely, every single CD that I open requires four signatures. It's myself, it's the mayor, it's Corey, as well as your city clerk. So I cannot, I'm not authorized to go and do any of that on my own. Every time I move money from one bank to another, I copy Corey, he gets a memo from me. And he actually does most of the moving. Anytime I'm moving money from Illinois funds, he actually does the movement. And he brings the receipt to our deputy clerk. So there are definitely, I'm not the only person whose hands are in this. There's definitely extra signatures, and there are more people involved.
Almost every expenditure that's--
And I can appreciate--
Almost every expenditure--
And I can appreciate the logistics of having to shuffle numerous things around. And that's why we do have the oversight of the mayor and the treasurer, and in this case, in some cases, the clerk in that, keeping an eye on things. But I guess, one of the things that would be interesting is, though, on the significant things such as a million-dollar CD that if we could get copied on the logistics of, at least once it's occurred. Because I realize, something like a CD, you have to act sometimes that day in order to get the rate, because you don't know what the next day is going to bring. So that's all my comment is.
And honestly, a lot of times, you won't even see that transaction. The only reason you saw it in that report was because I wasn't sure where I was going to put it yet, because the interest rates are so bad, that I put it in a spot for a day or two till I could figure out what I was going to do with it. Normally, it's either staying at the same bank to be renewed, I'm cashing it in, because we need the cash, or I'm taking that full amount of that CD and moving it directly into a different CD at a different bank. So most of the time, you don't normally see that, which is probably why it stuck out to you this time. I don't normally deposit it and then move it again.
And just so everybody's aware, when Becky says aye, it's actually the coordination of her and the treasurer. Just so you're aware, both state statutes, well as your own city code, specifically authorize the treasurer to make those deposits and choose financial institutions that meet the state's criteria for ineligible investments. So it's the two of them working together, but your code specifically authorizes the treasurer to do that along with state statute.
Every expenditure that the city makes, with the exception possibly of some petty cash expenditures, are memorialized with a transmittal, which is a sheet that comes before three or four people to sign off on. Every one of them comes across my desk, they come across the department head's desk, they're submitted to the department head by the purchaser. So everything that we spend has three or four or five sets of eyes that look at it. Anybody else have any questions or comments on Becky's report? Thank you. Moving ahead. Under item A, we have the annexation of the Belvidere Cemetery. Attorney Mike Schultz is here in person. Did we want him to comment, Mike? Sure. Whatever's comfortable for you. Can you give a little background in why we're doing this, and so forth and so on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my name is Mike Schultz, I represent the Cemetery Association of Belvidere. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, thank you, staff, for taking some time to hear a little bit more about the Cemetery Association. I'm here with Dr. Roger Pope, he's the president of the Cemetery Association Board. And I'm also here with Sam Larson, who is the executive director, she runs the show over there. So a little brief background on the Cemetery Association, and then I will lead into what we're here tonight for, and then we're all happy to take any questions anybody might have.
Perfect.
The Cemetery Association is one of the oldest organizations in Boone County and Belvidere. It was established by special legislation in 1847, and it's been operating ever since. It, you're probably all familiar with it, it's east of Fairgrounds Road, and northwest of Bea Marshall and Webster Road, and south of the Prairie Fields Recreation Area, the Park District runs. And the Cemetery Association is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. They, how many sites do they have right now, Sam? Burial ground for 100 years. You also may know it's the home of the Pettit Chapel, designed by Frank Lloyd Wright, which was built in 1907. And it's a National Register of Historic Places, and in Illinois, a Register of Historic Places as well. Right now, the administrative office of the cemetery is located south of the property, right next to the service area, the maintenance building. It's not large enough, it's not modern, it's not very convenient. And when you're hosting folks that are either planning their own burials, or you're hosting family that is looking to bury their loved one, it's nice to have a nice, modern facility that has the modern amenities. And the newer building would also allow the association to better highlight the Pettit Chapel, be more welcoming to the public, be easier to find as well. Right now, the association consists of six separate parcels. Two of the parcels are already within the city of Belvidere, but the other ones are not, they're county township properties. So what we're here tonight for is to ask for the council to approve, or at least to submit the annexation agreement to the full city council, to have the other parcels annexed in. And the reason for that is, the parcel the association wants to build their new administrative building on is located off of Fairgrounds Road, across the street from RJ Daniels, in that general area, for those familiar with that area. The facility will be a one-story building, about 1,700 square feet. And we, the Cemetery Association is working with Omen Ernest Martin Local Architects to design the building. They have preliminary sketches. It's going to be in the Frank Lloyd Wright style, to really highlight the Pettit Chapel. It'll allow for record-keeping space, which is a big burden the association has. They have to document everything, they really have to record the history of all the people and the families that are buried there. It'll allow meeting space for families so they can better offer their services. And it'll just be a real benefit to the community. That area is growing, and is a very nice area of Belvidere, and they feel this will only highlight that area.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments for Attorney Schultz?
Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Mine was just the last exhibit, Exhibit J, it's lawyer lingo, so what does that mean? It's got all these different $50 per acre for tornado siren, that kind of thing?
I can address those. As you know, we have a standard form annexation agreement that we utilize. Mostly, it was actually developed prior to my arrival in the city of Belvidere in 2003. We've modified it a little bit since then. It's designed primarily for a residential development. Your fees in Exhibit J, it's called the Exaction Fee Schedule. It includes some things like, it's referenced in land cash fees, which are impact fees for school districts, park districts, conservation district, as well as the city to offset the cost of the development on our resources. You know, obviously, a single-family home is going to put kids in the school district potentially, impact our police and fire. The other fees are fees that were assessed in the past for either commercial, industrial, or residential development, and basically as a means of trying to offset the cost, for example, of tornado sirens and things like that. But each case, each of the fees essentially presumed a parcel of land that was going to be actively utilized for commercial, industrial, or residential purposes. Obviously, this parcel of land wouldn't be used for any one of those purposes. So the Exhibit K, as some of you will recall, really is the section where we make modifications to the form agreement. So once the council's familiar with the form agreement, your first step would actually be to look at Exhibit K, and see what we're changing, or recommend to be changed. And you'll notice in Section 5, the applicant has asked for, and the staff is willing to recommend, actually not requiring payment of many of the fees in Exhibit J, so long as the property is used for cemetery purposes. Obviously, if they sell at some point in the future, as Exhibit K states, and it's developed commercially, industrially, which it couldn't be, or residentially, which I really doubt, then they'd have to pay the impact fees.
Even though it's a 501(c)?
If they sold it, it wouldn't be a 501(c).
Additional questions or comments?
But in answer to your question, 501(c) status has nothing to do with impact fees.
Just wanted to also give a little history to it. The building that I am currently, as my office, was built in 1888. It was originally the holding vault, where they kept the bodies in the winter, which we no longer need to do. So we're definitely needing it. The state has now put in new regulations to us for more paperwork, meeting with families personally. And so we're definitely in need of a new building. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, before we go on, as I'm looking at Exhibit K, answering the Alderman's question, I just realized there's a typo in line in paragraph seven. It says that we'd agree to waive the $5,400 annexation fee. There's an extra zero in there, it's a $540 annexation fee, not $5,400.
Alderman Porter?
Yeah, forgive me if I, if this is a duplicate question, I couldn't hear most of what Attorney Drowell was saying, but we're talking about waiving, it says waiving most impact fees, et cetera. How much are we talking about if we're waiving these fees, just some type of a figure?
You're not talking about very much at all, because the reality is, as is current use of a cemetery, they wouldn't be paying those fees anyway. So what, the only things they're actually potentially waiving are the $50 per acre for the tornado siren, the $50 for the bike path planning, capital improvement fee. And frankly, the Park District is working along with us as far as, you know, bike paths and the sidewalk there. The $50 per acre wellsite reservoir planning and improvement fee. The $50 sewer system planning expense expansion fee. And again, they won't really be utilizing the sewer system very much, other than for a bathroom. The $80 per lot at a public library, because it's really just one or two lots, you're talking about $80 or $160. And the storm planning expansion fee of $50 per acre. That's really the only things you're talking-- fee of $50 per acre. That's really the only things you're talking about there. The big-ticket items, which are the school impact fees, they wouldn't be paying anyway, because they're not building residences.
Okay. I still didn't quite get all of that, but would they be paying the normal sewer fees then that every resident pays during, you know, each month?
Yes, they'd be paying those. Those are not waived, and they'd also be paying the connection fees.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
We have not had a motion yet, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I thought we did.
The recommended motion is a motion to approve and forward to city council. It's actually two motions. The motion to approve and forward to city council the annexation agreement between the city of Belvedere and the Cemetery Association of Belvedere. That would be the first motion.
I'll make that motion. May I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second? Okay. Alderman Frank. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee? Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow? Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Second motion is motion to approve and forward. City council ordinance annexing the territory commonly known as the Belvedere Cemetery. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Alderman Revelo, second by Alderman Flurry, or Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? If not all in favor of approval, will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Good to see Up next, under item B, Public Works. We have 2020 MFT thermoplastic pavement striping bid tabulation. Director?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in the packet. We received two bids for our 2020 MFT thermoplastic pavement striping, AC pavement striping $12,593.35, and precision pavement marking $16,103.80. I would recommend approval of the low bid from AC pavement striping in the amount of $12,593.35 for the 2020 MFT thermoplastic pavement striping project, subject to IDOT approval. This work will be paid for from MFT funds.
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion. Porter?
Okay. Porter, Clayton, and Matt all made that motion. May I have a second?
I'll second, I guess.
Second by Arivolo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I just have one.
Hearing none. All those in favor will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
I had it up aye, too.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Alderman Frank?
Okay. It's just a question that I can't remember, but do, are we in a contract with Rockford? That's why we get the lower cost or something?
No, well, that's for our painted pavement markings, and you're correct. We do that through a joint purchasing program we have with the city of Rockford and the city of Cherry Valley. This is for the thermoplastic pavement. This is the stripe, the type of material we use on new overlays. So, this will be putting the striping down that's needed for the streets on the overlay this year that need to have pavement markings put on, and we use thermoplastic.
Sure. Anybody else? Twenty-one, twenty-two. All those in favor will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee? Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director?
Next up, we have our MFT street overlay bid tabulation. We received four bids for that work, low bid being from Rock Road Companies in the amount of $524,902. Our estimate for that project was $650,060. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Rock Road Companies in the amount of $524,902 for the 2020 MFT street overlay program, subject to IDOT approval. And again, this work will be paid for from MFT funds.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Snow, I don't know what you...
Okay. Snow?
Um, so Brent, because of this type of project, I'm assuming that the contractors have to adhere to the prevailing wage. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Any other questions?
And who does the audit to make sure that that's occurring?
The MFT, State of Illinois IDOT, MFT auditor comes around periodically to review all our documentation, paperwork for all of our expenditures of MFT funds.
Was there another question?
Alderman Freeman?
Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So, Brent, I'm assuming that this reflects the present striping in this bid. The reflects a revised overlay because of that MFT fund shortage, but we had $650,000 that we were going to do initially. If this bid came in $125,000 less, are we going to be able to now add more to that, or no?
Yes and no. Unfortunately, the state will not let us add to this contract. However, we'll take the money that we don't expend this year, and we'll roll it over and add it into next year's program.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval. The motion now on the floor will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director Anderson?
Next up is the bid opening, the bid tabulation we had for our high school in Bellwood Ponds project. We received six bids back on that project, the low bid being from Fisher Excavating in the amount of $390,970.8. The capital fund included $600, or $600, $600,000 for this work. And keep in mind also that part of this project will take the excavated material from the pond, two ponds, and take that down to the Leith property, the Brownfield project, where it'll be placed and includes the liner that has to be installed, and then that material will be used as part of the 18-inch clay, 18-inch cap that we're required to put on that site. So, I would recommend approval of the low bid from Fisher Excavating in the amount of $390,970.8 for the high school in Bellwood Ponds project. This work will be paid for from capital funds and grant funds.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Alderman Stevens and a second by Alderman Frank.
I'll second it.
I already have a second, but thank you. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank.
So, Brent, are they just going to basically dig it deeper and then just excavate the dirt? And then you said something about an 18-inch cap?
So, the high school pond, they're going to basically eliminate the inside berm. The State of Illinois IDOT is going to allow us to store some water on the right-of-way and use the incline, the embankment that's already exists there for US Route 20, since most, all the water that we're adding to the, putting into this pond is coming from the US 20 right-of-way. So, that one's going to make, we're going to increase the capacity of that pond. The Bellwood Pond is a totally new pond where one doesn't exist now. So, the excavated material from both of those ponds are going to be taken to the Brownfield property and used as the cap that we are required to place on that property.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval. The motion now on the floor will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director Anderson?
Next up is demolition of 407 West Madison Street. Again, memo in your packet, and there's a picture of the property also attached. We have taken, the city has taken ownership of that vacant property, and the building director has completed his inspection of the single-family residence, and has determined that the cost to make the necessary repairs to the structure exceeds more than 50% of the value of the property, and therefore, the recommendation would be to have the structure removed. This property was included in our Illinois Housing Development Authority grant that the city received for abandoned residential property relief, and all costs associated with the demolition will be paid for by the grant. I would therefore recommend that the city go to bid for the demolition of 407 West Madison Street.
May I have a motion to approve going to bid?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Revelo, second by Alderman, was it Stevens? Thank you very much. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Alderman Porter?
Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Yeah, just a quick question. I just wanted to see if this property has any, or the building has any historical certificates that we should know about?
That's going to be, inspection will be made, and that'll be determined to see if any of that, any parts or portions of the structure need to be salvaged. In addition, prior to demolition, the fire department will be doing some exercises on the property as well.
Additional questions or comments?
I have a question.
Alderman Snow, please proceed.
So, we wind up with a vacant lot. So, what is the administration's intention at that point in order to unload the property, or what's the tentative game plan?
Well, as far as discussion goes that we've had between department heads, a couple options are, we could provide it to the land bank. In addition, it'd be basically a clean lot for repurposing. We could do, get a donation to the Habitat for Humanity for new residents in that fashion, or any other ideas that the council may have for the disposition of the property.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in...
And I guess, I guess one thing would be, do we want to potentially offer it to either one of the homeowners, or the one maybe behind it, as a purchase to expand their lot? Just tossing that out there. Because everybody's giving it to the land bank. We as a city don't get anything out of it. Not that we're going to get a whole lot out of a lot, but just tossing that out there that there might be interest for that.
Well, I guess one option would be, we could hire a Realtor and list it, and if we get an offer on the lot, that would be fine. Right now, Habitat's a little backed up. We've got two or three more lots to develop for Habitat, and it's been taking a long time to get this latest one that we started last fall finished. And you're right about the land bank. If we give it to the land bank, we don't really have the benefit, except that they will find someone to take the lot under their covenants to produce something on that lot with a timeframe and requirements, and we'll put it back on the tax rolls. The biggest thing is to put it back on the tax rolls. So, that's an excellent suggestion. We can look at doing that also. There, of course, if we hire a Realtor to do it, I doubt that they're going to waive their commission if they sell it, but we have connections with the Realtor Association. We can certainly talk to them very directly. Good idea, Dan.
As long as we make other options and take into consideration that obviously, we as a city want to make sure that we get this back on the tax rolls as quick as possible and get something out of it, and that the immediate neighbors that have been living with this mess, maybe they would get a benefit. Just tossing that out there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director Anderson?
Next up is the Prairie Place Lift Station generator installation. White Lift Lift Station Upgrade Project is nearly complete, and that project included the installation of a new larger standby generator, and we would like to take the original white lift generator, which is still operational, and the required switchgear, and install that at the Prairie Place Lift Station. We received three proposals to do the necessary electric work. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Angle Electric in the amount of $6,889 for the Prairie Place Lift Station electrical work. This work will be paid for from the Sewer Appreciation Fund.
I have a motion to approve. Alderman Frank approves.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Anybody else got a comment? All those approve.
I guess I have a question. Brent, I was kind of surprised that you went, that the bid was at $27,000 down to $7,000. It just seemed like quite a big jump on such a small project. Any scoop on that?
I believe Morse Electric was extremely busy, and they just provided the price when we made the request of them. So, they're usually much more competitive than that, but I think at this point in time, they were extremely busy.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Snow. Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have one.
Yes, Alderman Freeman, you have the floor. Please proceed.
So, Brent, is there, is there already a generator at the Prairie Place Lift Station? We're just going to swap out with the larger one for the White Lift, and let's sort of do a little bit of the rest over there?
No, there's not, there's not a standby generator at the Prairie Place Lift Station. So, when the old one became available from White Lift, because the existing one at White Lift wasn't big enough to power the improvements, the upgrades we made to the White Lift Lift Station, that's what's allowing us to be able to utilize the original lift station at Prairie Place, or generator.
Okay. So, is this one going to be big enough to hit the Prairie Place?
This will be bigger than what's needed at Prairie Place, but however, that's not a problem.
Additional questions? Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval will when your name is called. Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter? Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director Anderson?
Next up is the SCADA system upgrade for our water well system. In 2019, last year, we made upgrades to the hardware controls and four wells, at four of our wells, as well as the master station. However, the computer that sits behind that and runs the system is a Windows 7-based and is no longer maintained by Microsoft. We have received a proposal from Tri-R Systems in the amount of $19,100 to upgrade the system to a Windows 10. Due to the nature of this project, we did not advertise for bids, as Tri-R Systems has designed and installed the original SCADA system and has continued to provide the maintenance and the updates for that system. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Tri-R Systems in the amount of $19,100 for updating the Water Department's SCADA system to the Windows 10 operating platform. This work will be paid for from the Water Depreciation Account.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Alderman Frank?
Please proceed.
What did you say?
Whoever, Alderman Porter, is that you?
Yes. I, I just had a quick question. Do we need to waive the bidding process, or do we motion for waiving the bidding process on this one?
No, as the total is less than $20,000. The threshold for waive the bidding requirement is $20,000.
Alderman Freeman?
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm not sure who is going to answer this, maybe Attorney Dalla. We've been since we switched to the SCADA system at work, we've been pretty much simultaneously taking all of our stuff off the obsolete Windows 7 and upgrading it. So do we have a lot more departments or a lot more things that are going to need to be doing those upgrades? Because they're kind of costly.
The SCADA system is not actually part of our network infrastructure, so that's completely independent. I, City Hall has completely migrated to the Windows 10 platform. That's pretty much the only one I oversaw in the past. I don't know what the status is with the fire department or the PSB, but my guess, the PSB is probably current, given the fact that the IT department that we recently contracted with has provided their IT services all along. Public Works, the wastewater treatment plant, I believe, has now migrated everything to Windows 10. We are in the process of doing that for the street department, but we're only talking about two computers, oh, I'm sorry, three computers there that we have to worry about. And I honestly don't know what the status is of the water department. The new IT staff from the county was looking at that a couple weeks ago.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, the motion now on the floor. Will when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Director?
Next up is the primary clarifiers inspection for the wastewater treatment plant. The equipment in our primary clarifiers was last updated in 1996, and it's due for inspection and analysis. I received a proposal from Baxter and Woodman in an amount not to exceed $9,600 to complete that inspection of both primary clarifiers and provide recommendations for rehab and repairs. I would recommend approval of their proposal in an amount not to exceed $9,600. This work will be paid for from line item 615-820-6190.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Revelo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
I, I think we pay a lot to Baxter and Woodman, and I understand it's been since 1996, but is this a budgeted item?
It's included in the, in the current budget under the line item that was listed in the motion.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
Alderman Porter?
Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Yeah, Brett, I was just curious. Is this actually an inspection that requires an engineering company to do, or is it something that we could actually do with in-house employees?
What's required is, is the, we got to drain the tanks, clean the tanks, which is what we do in-house. Then we have the engineers come in to look at all the components within the clarifier. And then the key would be for their inspection, because once that inspection report is back to us, then we have to go through the process of going out to bid for the rehabilitation work that needs to be done, and the development of the specifications and plans for that work is probably the key component, but it starts with the inspection
Okay.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, the motion will, your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Yes, Director Anderson?
Just a one footnote, it's not on the agenda tonight, but just information for council. Well number four went down, unfortunately, and our initial inspection indicates that we're going to have to pull it out of the ground to determine what our status of repairs will be. So that information will be forthcoming.
Okay. So we're at that special time of the evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Revelo. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Stevens. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for meeting good questions tonight.